I'm Gary Whitner, I'm with the station here.
Yeah, put that microphone up a little bit.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. And I've just met a couple of the new aldermen that I've not met before. But I wanted to thank you all beginning that we really appreciate the service and the donations and funds that we're receiving from you all. We've done that for, I think, like 22 years. And we've been in this business and we're really excited about the new things that we're going to be doing in the future. So with that ado, I've given you all some colored papers and brochures. I know it's better than reading all the copy of nothing but type. But it's just a little synopsis of what we've been doing and what our projects are going to be for the coming year. For those who have not seen or been down there at our studio, which is downstairs, there's pictures of the different locations that we operate out of. And we have two, we have a main studio and then we have another studio, it's called TriCaster Studio. And we use that for our videoing, our production downstairs. And it's all hooked up and it works real good. We just had to eventually get some equipment, into new equipment, that we've been able to accommodate. We had a new TriCaster system we had bought over a year, not quite a year ago, and it went out because of the electric and lighting. So we finally got that back this last week. And we're back in full operation. So we're pretty happy about that. The other thing that we've added, which some of you folks have noticed, that we do have a drone, a person that volunteers his services to do video in the air with the drone. His name is Joe Mancuso, and he does a real good job. All of our board members right now are volunteers. We don't get a dime for any of this. And what we do is we just try to let the public know what we're doing and what the community is doing. To go over this, the front page gives you a picture of the main studio, and we also have a classroom for people that would like to take video training, and it's free. We also have, we're right now in the process of updating our equipment, and we've come up and designed a new website, which is much easier for people to follow. The old website system was kind of confusing. It was all a few pictures and most it was just copy, one copy after another. So you didn't know what the object or what the story was about. People right now can get on our website, which is StGenTV.com. That's all you have to do, and it will put you to our page, our website page. It will, it has options where you can watch it on your desktop, your tabloid, and your iPhone. So if any of you gentlemen and ladies want to look at it on your iPhone, you can do it. It's all set up. The other thing is that we'll be working this year, later this year, is the live stream. We've been in the process of live streaming your meetings, council meetings. And we'll be doing that with other events as time goes on. But it takes a while to hook up the equipment and try to get it in sync to what is available to the community. It is also, by doing this website, we get a lot of calls and a lot of views, and not from just St. Jen, but St. Jen County, state, and world. We're in the process of editing those calls, those views. And there is a little chart that shows where we started in June, first of June in the back. It's a little pie chart. And it gives you how many views we've had since actually the middle of July we were in operation. And it's going to keep growing. People become more familiar with it. Our funding, funding, we have the, well, we've had in the past, we've used the St. Gen观 County Community Foundation for grants. That's where we get a lot of our grants from, and they're very cooperative, they're very generous with us at times, especially when we need cameras and computers. It works out real well. This year is, we should be eligible to apply for another grant, so we can update some of our equipment. The other thing is, of course, a training plan for people of all ages. If they want to learn to video, do certain projects, they need to come down and talk to us about it, and we'll be glad to give them training. Of course, we'll be using them too. It's free, so what we do is say, if you would like to go ahead and learn how to do some videos, do your own videos and stuff, we'll be glad to teach you. But the only thing we ask is once in a while, we may call on you to video a certain event. And that's what that's all about. It's kind of a small print, but on the bottom of that front sheet, it'll be what our new website looks like. And like I said, the best thing to do is to go on your computer, your iPad or phone, iPhone, and look at it. You'll be surprised. It's very simple to move around and operate around in that website. It's broken down into categories, and it's real simple, and it's, it works, it really works. We're still improving on it, but it's at a point where we can operate efficiently. And that's updated every day. Not only our TV stations, 1990 and 991, you can see it all on the website as well. Our budget, which you graciously given us an amount of $23.5, and that works out good for us, we learned to live with that. Of course, you can always ask more, you know, more. But, and most TV stations, they operate in about anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 a year.
That's what we were going to give you this year.
Well, let's just change this figure then. Add a few zeros to it. But we've been doing that for several years. And, you know, I'm very proud of our team because all of our board members know how to operate a camera, a video camera. And we can call on them to video this event and so forth. Do you all have any questions? That's all I've got right now.
I don't really have a question, but I would like to thank Gary, you, and the rest of the people. You're doing a great thing for the community. You know, you're thanking us all the time, we need to thank you.
And I agree, I appreciate that.
Just in the three and a half years that I've been involved here, not, not just the content that you guys provide, but I remember what the studio looked like, one of my first meetings, and you took me downstairs and showed it to me at that time. And to see it now, you know, a lot of people see what you do on the air and on the TV or on the thing, and I want to commend all you guys on the amount of work you did behind the scenes and how good you got everything looking and how you utilized that space down there. It looks great.
Have you been in touch with the schools at all? I know at St. Jen, they're doing some things with live streaming of sporting events and...
Yes, we have, and we've had some situations where I don't want to say anything maybe, but it's just not, teams be working out as much as we've tried over the last 10, 12 years.
Well, I mean, this is a relatively new thing that they've been doing recently up there. Like I said, they're doing sportscasting things with students, and they've got a green screen studio, kind of similar to what you have here up there. So I would think there would be some kind of a partnership with them and might be beneficial to both parties.
Yes, and we've tried that several years ago, and every year we've tried.
Sounds like you're volunteering.
I will certainly put people in touch that can do something about it.
Well, we got Gary Smith right now.
Right, he's on the board.
Right, yeah, he does a lot with that, I think, so. Aren't we doing some of their games on the...
Yeah, we pull that off when there's, there's...
Yeah.
Gary, if you're aware of a community population of 4,000 to 6,000 people, it has a budget of $125,000 to $150,000 for community television, please give me their names so I can investigate.
I've got several of the subjects that we talked to, communicated with, especially up in St. Louis. Different stations up there and directors, and they've got budgets out of this world, you know. They deal with, we've got several guys that's worked for Channel 4 and Channel 5 and some of those. They've turned out to be good, good people to talk to and to learn. But they were impressed what we had for what we're doing. They just couldn't believe that we're that far advanced.
It is good.
And we have trained students from the school I've taken over the past two or three years, and they're down there at Cape right now doing their specialty in videography and production. So it just depends on what type of individual that really wants to stay with it and stick with it and really be dedicated. It's a good opportunity for them.
It's a great opportunity for the community. Again, I thank you.
It's been bringing in more money the last couple of years, officer, my understanding, than what we...
Yeah, we can't quite figure it out.
Yeah, we can't figure out what it is, because this is all from people subscribing to cable. And the cable pays us a percentage, not us directly, it pays the city, and the city hands out a portion of that to us.
I'm not going to call the state and ask them why, because they might go ups.
Yeah, right, don't want to do that.
Yeah, that's good, Bill. Maybe we'll ask for a raise next year.
Yeah.
We'll have to wait and see what it brings in next year.
Y'all did good this year, or this past year, on what you took and what we got.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
We'll move on to our city administrative report.
Okay, you're aware by virtue of an email I sent out this, we've reached an agreement with Piva on a revised lease that's on your agenda tonight for first reading. While it isn't urgent, the quicker we can approve it, the quicker we'll start getting the higher payment, so you might want to consider second reading when the time comes. No, they will hand it to me when I hand them a signed lease. The, I mentioned to you that I went to the Missouri Municipal League meeting before our last meeting, and one of the sessions had to do with the role of parks in community development, and the St. Gen观 Challenger Field and park and playground were highlighted there. So we have, about two or three times a year, we have a meeting of the southeastern regional city administrators, and we try and put together a program that would be of interest. Well, that really sparked a lot of interest at the Missouri Municipal League meeting, so I was asked if I could arrange to have someone, well, I was asked if I would come present how we pulled it off, and since we didn't pull it off, I asked Jason Schott if he could come, or Sarah, his wife came, to kind of explain how this grassroots, you know, a vision of two people ended up being a Challenger Field and later the playground. So Sarah came down and gave a very informative presentation. I've since heard that at least three of the communities that are now pursuing that with their Board of Aldermen to see if they can't get support for an effort to get either a ball field or an all-inclusive playground, kind of, not just from Sarah, but from the whole kind of movement of things, has gotten people energized about that topic. So I feel like they made their contribution as the...
I was listening to the radio last week, and they were talking about, you're talking about these Challenger Fields, and if I remember correctly, I think the man on the radio said there's only four in Missouri.
I don't know, I might not...
And he brought up St. Gen观, what a good job they did.
What got them, you know, the Schott's, they have a child who was challenged, he's autistic, and they had to go elsewhere to find a ball field that was suitable for them to play. And that's what motivated them, and they just kind of like took off. Yeah, there aren't, there aren't a lot of them up there. I don't know if four is the right number. Mayor and I attended the Southeast Regional Planning Annual Meeting last night, it was Chauncey Buckhite's final meeting. They're working to find a replacement for him. Four of the existing staff members have applied for consideration. There's a committee that was formed to select his successor. I don't care who they pick, we're losing a great resource when Chauncey retires. You know, Jokers completed their work. I don't know if you've driven around and looked at it, it was a fine job.
It looks fantastic.
And I was particularly impressed with Third Street, which was not the main body of the work, but it was the most technically difficult, having to match the grades of the curbs and get the proper sump into the drains. I mean, they just, they just did an excellent job. Excellent job.
The floor looks very nice.
The floor looks amazing.
I've had a couple of calls on that. She wanted to thank the board and city workers and...
I think the state still needs to come in and do some work in the right of way. It's kind of silted in and filled up, so the drainage doesn't work quite like it should. But I understand they're, now that we've done the street, they're motivated to come in and do their part. The wayfinding signs that have been much talked about with the downtown renewal project were received. We have to assemble them and install them. The downtown renewal people are working on getting local merchants to subscribe, because that's how they're going to pay for the labeling on the signs. People are going to pay their contribution towards it. So the signs that came in were kind of raw metal, so they had them painted. I'm not sure what the process is, but it's that dry coat process, so that when they do put the lettering on, it will stay for years instead of being on exposed metal.
I don't know what they're thinking, Mark.
I might let Gary talk about that, since he's actually seen them. But they'll be seven feet high.
There's 14-foot poles, they have to be buried at least three foot in the ground, so it could be up to 11-foot out of the ground. It's going to depend on the amount of signs that hang on.
Oh, I see.
But if they're, we need to create a certain clearance over the walkways, so they'll have to be at least seven feet from the, to the bottom of the first sign.
For individual signs.
They're going to be those...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, they're going to be one by whatever signs that will have the names on them and the arrows. So the mayor was at a meeting of the park board that I missed Monday night, but they kind of made a major policy shift. They decided not to pursue the sand volleyball court for fear that there was lack of sufficient interest to get to that level of participation, they hope. Most of the active sand volleyball courts appear to be associated with places that serve adult beverages, which would not happen in the park. So the funds that they do have available, they're going to enhance the dog park and buy additional equipment for the skateboard park in the immediate future. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Steve.
All right, you guys all had my report there. Notice in here, point-based tank, it's the tank off Plaza Drive behind the insurance department. That tank was taken out of service last month and cleaned, disinfected, inspected. Should have the annual report back here in about a month or so. Each tank in town is, that the city has, is inspected once a year. That one is due for a external wash and a paint job next, so.
When is that tank, Steve?
That tank was built in 94.
It's been there a while.
So, let's see here. High service pump number two, the contractor failed on us, took a little bit to get the parts in to get it going again. We ran on high service pump number three while we were waiting, waiting for the parts. That being said, since that one, high service pump number three motor has failed, so we have a new one in, actually be installed next week. And the cause of that one is bearing failure in the pump. Those pumps have been running since, well, 94, when the plant was built. So that was the first time it'd ever been apart, for bearing failure. So.
Questions?
No questions? Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve. Sandra's at a conference, so she's not able to be here. I'm going to have to report.
Yeah, it's a session for, for that, the state tourism conference in wherever they're holding it, Grand Central.
That brings us to Eric.
Good, guys, good. Good. Pretty straightforward. Have our call log from the month. We are at full staff. Think everything's going pretty well. I haven't heard any different. You guys have any concerns or questions?
We got here suspicious access, 38.
That could be anything from somebody walking down the road.
Suspicious calls in, somebody messing around in the neighborhood.
Yeah, could be a vehicle parked out that is unoccupied or blocking somebody's driveway or, so there's a lot that could fall under that category.
Yeah, we're sure it is.
We just got a lot of suspicious people here.
I guess.
Some of them are in this boardroom.
Correct.
There's been some increased activity graffiti around town, and the state, union authorities were in, and they found the person who was doing some of it. And they asked us if we wanted to seek restitution for the cost of removing it. The only one we've removed so far is the one that was at the Sure Defect Grounds. And so they said, well, would it be okay if we made him clean it up? And I thought, that's even better. So they're going to have this graffiti artist removing his artwork.
Is this a juvenile or an adult?
Juvenile.
Where'd it happen?
Downtown, down Main Street.
On that wooden bridge there.
Signs, benches, trailers, you name it. Officer Mason, you're kind of headed that up, did a good job finding the kids, getting all the information.
Do you believe we have all the perpetrators identified?
I think so.
You know, some of those can get pretty elaborate, and you have to look at that...
These aren't...
These aren't, these are pretty crude.
But look at some of them pretty elaborate, and it's like, that took a while. It's a shame they can't harness that.
Some of those people, you're right, Son Randy, some of those people that do this tagging, they are good. They have some talent.
Driving north on 55.
This guy, not so much, though.
But everybody's got to start somewhere.
I guess.
What kind of art class do you have?
Exactly. I'm sure some of those guys didn't start out as...
I mean, there's the Banksy guy in England, I mean, he makes a lot of money.
Like, you go up in St. Louis, I mean, some of them, they're way high up in a building, and you'd say, how long was that guy up there?
Exactly.
How did he get there?
Yeah.
And why?
All over them, right?
Alright, I think we digressed.
Mrs. Lane, 91, there, give us an example.
It could be somebody calling in, needing to return statements that they, that the officer had left, or a phone call for questions for an officer, or just anything that doesn't fit into one of the other categories.
There's so many categories, and then you got Mrs. Lane, 91.
Emergency McDonald's is out of apple pies.
That, I mean, that could be an emergency, if you really need an apple pie.
Delivering our packets.
Yeah.
That doesn't go through dispatch.
Oh, this is all dispatch, Jim?
Yeah, this is, this is all of our calls for service that we get from dispatch.
So you get calls directly back there?
Yes. But when they, when they call, when our officers call it out that they're out at a location for whatever, then that still goes in as a generated call.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Steve, I had a resident that said he had gotten contacted in a lottery scam, that he won a couple million dollars. I need to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
That was, kind of for him.
There's no shortage of scammers.
One of you.
I said, there's no shortage of scammers in the world, so.
Basically, or just over the phone?
Over the phone.
In the name of your...
The old thing, move forward, huh?
Yes, yes. And I actually saw that I had neglected to take out, should the proposition get approved? It did get approved, so he is at training now, so. So I think everything seems to be going well. He's putting some weight on the dog. We brought the dog in, City Hall, and introduced him to everybody during the day. It's a good-looking dog, and I think he's, I think he's going to work out really well, good temperament and, so.
What's his name?
Mario.
Italian.
We don't name him. He's a Dutch shepherd.
Dutch shepherd.
And he's with Officer Cusinelli.
Yeah, that's appropriate.
That's what I was driving at, so.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carla?
Good evening. So during August, there wasn't really anything that was major meetings, permits, inspections, and Heritage Commission, so there wasn't, and that was during August. I apologize for not being at the last meeting, but I was off that day, and I had to be here tonight anyway, so we just combined it into one.
We did seek the plans or the visions to the Kenny Building for the museum, and they're very impressive.
They are.
And they're giving a lot of thought to how the best to use that building, and how personally impressed with kind of the innovative...
how, how personally impressed with kind of the innovative effort and thought they're putting into it. It's gonna be nice.
Yes.
Maybe just that building, or is it...
Well...
Some of the properties next to that, or...
Well, there's, there's three buildings. Well, two of them are attached there, and then the other building on the other side of the alley. But I don't know that the building on the other side of the alley is going to be open to the public, at least initially. I think initially it's gonna be used for more of a storage or, or, you know, services for them. Or a barber shop was.
But they're gonna take the space between those buildings and make a courtyard.
Make a courtyard.
Oh, and, and, and the main entrance will be in the side of the building.
Right.
Off of the front, because structurally, they couldn't get the opening they needed for handicap accessibility and all that.
Exactly.
So they're gonna do it through the side, but creating this courtyard that they planned to tents to get, kind of, provide a place to be out of the sun, and it's just, it's, they're really thinking about it.
They are. Yeah, it looks to be really nice.
I, I had, uh, been out driving around recently and then going down, uh, Ninth Street, and had noticed some, uh, what appeared to be abandoned properties, uh...
Yes, those are actually being dealt with currently, and, um, probably by this weekend, we should see some improvement on those.
Is there two or three?
There's two currently that are, that are being worked on.
Pretty tall grass, kinda.
Yes. One of, one of them, one of them was an issue of, of the property was sold.
Oh, really?
For back taxes, so...
Isn't there one up a Ridgeway, too, that's pretty big?
There is.
They made some improvements on that also this week.
Have they this week?
How about our property on Main Street?
Main Street, I've heard nothing from her.
Really?
Nothing. No one's seen her around. We've heard nothing.
So in the event that we can't locate the homeowner, what are, what are our options of steps to do something with it?
Mark, and I'm sorry, you probably don't know much of what is going on with this property.
You can mitigate the public issues.
Right, right.
Right.
That's it.
To what degree?
To the point that it's no longer a threat to public health, I think.
Right.
I think there's a pretty significant, both of those, from what I understand.
There are some things.
Yeah. And it's been going for so long, it really, you know?
Right.
And I know you're on it, I'm just asking to find out where...
Yeah.
Where we are.
Well, and we haven't heard anything from her. She's staying away. She's, she's not even been seen around town.
Yeah.
Was a pretty impressive move out there on Jefferson the other day.
It was.
It was.
Yes, it was.
That was an interesting move.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Uh, Jefferson, um...
Between Main and Second Street.
See, I've had all the dogs that went around bothering me.
Yeah. Yeah, there were a lot of dogs in there, too, that we weren't aware of. They were all inside the house.
Is there a, uh, amount of dogs in a household limit in St. Genevieve? I don't, I, I used to live in St. Louis, they had a certain, like, two or three animals.
No.
Large animals in the house.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Carla. Any committee reports? I sat at the Heritage Committee, Randy and I.
I was there.
Go ahead, you wanna talk about that? I think things are really going well with our Heritage Committee.
For the most part, yeah. I, I would say it, it went pretty well. There's a little here and there, but we, we got through it. You know? I would still like to see some things changed there. I think, you know, and I'm open to whenever you wanna sit down and maybe try to streamline a little bit.
Well, I think they've made some progress doing that, too.
Oh, they have.
They have. Carla's been, uh...
Yeah.
Where people have been being better prepared when they come to the meeting, and, and my hope is that this board doesn't have to, that they settle every issue in that committee. And so far, they've been doing really well. Because that, when you bring it, when they, when it has to come to the board and the board has to make a decision, it causes some tension between that board and this board, and we don't want that, you know? So, but there are some, there's some things that are going on, and, and for the most part, people have been open and accepting and realizing where they're at.
At least the rapport with the public seems to be going, going pretty good.
Oh, yeah. That committee is doing really well.
Yeah.
I'm really impressed with them. They're really a good group of people that, uh, care. You know, not only for the people, but for the, the community as well, the historic district here, so... Anybody else? We heard from the TV, so, very good. Public comments? Anybody here to speak, public? Bob? You're up, my friend.
Bob Brownie, four ninety-eight Merson Street. I was talking to Martin, I think it was Monday, excuse me, as regarding the house next to me with the gutter problem. And he brought it, Martin brought it to my attention, there was some of you on the board that wanted to ask me a question, but didn't wanna embarrass me, and I, so Martin kind of explained to me what the question was. Whenever anybody has a question here, please ask me. If it embarrasses me, so what? I mean, but to answer your guys' question, the reason why I have been making a big stink just in recent months, and I'm talking in six months, but working with, uh, Steve Wallens for a year, is because prior to Steve buying the house, there was the same problem. But I think most, everybody here knows Wayne, the guy who used to live there. He took better care of that place than a homeowner would. He maintained to the best of his ability that gutter problem. And he would go out there and make little ditches so the water would run away from my house. So that's the answer to that question, and nobody wanted that, according to Martin, nobody wanted to ask that question, but that is why it wasn't brought up prior till I've been raising hell about it.
Hey, Bob, is that the same gutter as that, the property when Wayne owned it?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, that's what I said. It, it, um, Steve bought it from his buddy, um...
Yeah, I don't care if we bought it from him. What I, I just wanna know if that's the same gutter, is that right?
It's the same, exactly, same gutter. Same gutter. And that little flapper thing, Wayne used to take his rake and hit it and make the water not come as bad. So, I mean, Wayne maintained it to where I had a minimal water coming into my basement. So that's, that question.
So is there a person living in that house now?
No.
That's what, yeah.
So the house has been burned, and it's, and it's, I understand it's gonna be, Carla says he's gonna be fixing that house, so, that's the way I understand.
And they did finally cite him this week, 'cause he just refused, he just held work on that gutter, spent time doing it, but he won't fix the problem problem. So they did cite him, so, I mean, that, I am thankful for.
Yeah, didn't he put something in it?
Yeah.
Right.
All the way?
Yeah, all the way, but the gutter still does not go the entire length of the roof. So there, there's, there's like an inch or so missing, and it's in the valley part of the roof. So wherever water comes out, it's gonna shoot straight on, no gutter. So, you know, Wayne took care of it the best he could, and, you know, but, yeah, that's why you guys have been hearing me, 'cause it's been, since Steve's bought it, there's been no maintenance on the house, zilch. And so that's why the problem got worse, it was 'cause nobody was there to take care of it.
But you're saying he hasn't been cited?
He, yeah, finally told me.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're on it. Okay.
Yeah, so he's been cited, but, you know, so...
Well, I hope you get some satisfaction.
Oh, yeah, I don't care about that, I just want it resolved.
Well, what's, what I mean is, I hope the problem can be resolved.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I just want what I can do. But I, I would ask Martin, if it's possible, could you please keep me, um, up to date on when the court date is, so I can be there, please? Is that okay?
He wouldn't be scheduled, so I don't know what it is, but we'll call you tomorrow and tell you what it is.
Alright. I appreciate you guys' time.
Okay.
Is that it? Anybody wanna ask me anything more about that place? 'Cause this, to me, is like beating a dead dog. I'm tired of it.
'Cause the, the improvements that were made recently, though, are, are an improvement and are moving in the right direction to keep...
Well, it depends on how you want it. I mean, it, it's not gonna resolve anything, the, the water's still gonna come off the end. I mean...
I keep hoping it's gonna rain one day when I have an opportunity to come over and check it out, but...
Carla has videos...
Hasn't.
You know, Carla's got videos of, of that gutter.
And that's when we got twelve inches of rain that weekend.
Okay.
There's the video there.
This is the problem I'm having, defending this guy. Carla, it was, it was that, but when, prior to that bad storm, it was coming down. It was, it, it, you could take a garden hose. Two of you seen the problem. You came out there and looked at the gutter.
Well, we, let's, I'll tell you what, let's, we could debate this all night long. The, the citation has been cited. What I'm not gonna have is, is a he said, she said, so we're not gonna get into that, Bob. So I appreciate you coming and cheering.
Well, I didn't bring it up, Carla.
Well, I know, that's, but it's, but I'm gonna end it, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else for public comments? So that's gonna take us to a public hearing, so at six forty, we're gonna open a public hearing. And this public hearing is, uh, the purpose of this hearing is to consider requests from, please come to the, to the podium and state your names.
Candy Mahiran.
Hi, Candy.
Dale Mahiran.
Hey, Dale. So, and this is a special use permit, so Carla, you wanna fill us in?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, Candy and...
All of you is Lehman, is that right?
Lehman is his real legal name.
Okay, okay. Okay. Mahiran, they...
A lot easier.
They are requesting a special use permit to operate a retail space, a classroom and art studio, and to install a freestanding sign at three eleven St. Mary's Road, which is a single-family structure in an R2 general residential district. The evidence that I'd like to introduce this evening is the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, the comprehensive plan, and the staff report, including the planning and zoning recommendation, which you should have in front of you. The, uh, the property is bordered by a residence on the north side, on the west by a residence, and on the south by an empty lot, which will also be purchased by the applicant. The, um, intention is to have, in the empty lot next door, is to have a, a parking area for off-street parking, because the code does require a minimum of one parking space per two hundred square feet of floor area in the, uh, in the facility. We have, I have conditions on this special use request that I would like to be considered in this application. Prior to occupancy, that the dwelling be not occupied until any final permits in the occupancy permit is issued. The owner shall maintain a business license with the City of St. Genevieve under Municipal Code, Chapter six oh five, for business licensing. The applicant is to provide not less than one off-street parking space per two hundred square feet of floor area. Deliveries and/or use of large trucks should be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of eight AM and six PM. The exterior yard to be maintained at all times. The planning and zoning administrator shall conduct an annual inspection of the property and submit a written report to the Board of Aldermen regarding the compliance with the terms of the special use permit. During the planning and zoning meeting that was held at the beginning of this month, the recommendation to the Board of Aldermen was a recommendation of approval, and that was with a vote of five yes, zero no, and three absent. And if that is what I have for you this evening, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Chris? I would like to just make a note that the one guy that was at planning and zoning over the...
Yes. Bill.
Bill.
He owns the lot next door, and he was all in favor of this.
That is correct.
And also, the, the planning and zoning, uh, we actually got colored photos and stuff, and the color choices and everything of how they're gonna fix up and repaint the house, uh, is gonna look fabulous. It's, it's really neat.
Looks at historic significance, eh? Isn't that the Brooks?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that is the Brooks.
In your aerial view of this, it's the house right by the number seventy-nine. Right to the left, where it sits.
Sure. Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, that's, and this is the basement line.
This is the empty locker.
Okay. The house has been empty for...
Four years.
Ten years, something like that.
I've had my eye on it for quite a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just happened to be the right opportunity this time.
Be nice to have something in there.
It would be.
I think it's a great idea.
So that is all that I have. Any other questions?
Why did they build these houses with two doors, two front doors?
I actually have heard a few different reasons. One, people would, with there being an entrance right into a bedroom, they would rent out that room to transient workers, and that way it had its own entrance and exit from the house that didn't interfere with the rest of the family. There was another, um, reason that I had heard was that they had an entrance and an exit, uh, for a viewing if someone had passed away in the family.
There's like a circular...
That way there wasn't anyone, yeah, they just had a way in and way out.
The nineteen-fifties, and they had two front doors.
Yeah.
I'd be like that. Two front, two back.
I'll bet you, if you really wanna know the answer to that question, you talk to Mr. Bob Mueller, he'll tell you.
That's true.
There are lots of theories, nobody knows for sure.
That what he said? He checked me on that.
He said, "I think it's a great idea."
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing then. You, folks, you have anything to say? Anybody in the audience? We'll close the, the hearing at six forty-six. At this time, we'll need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then you got, uh, we have the consent agenda, did everybody get a chance to... You got your closed session in there, your consent, the consent agenda? Yep.
Move approved.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Turn your closed session, let it be back.
Yes, back.
A lot of papers.
Yeah, what if I'm on the TV stuff?
I look sad.
The mayor's organized.
Oh, yeah.
Get through it.
Y'all ready to move on?
Yeah.
Takes us into old business. Uh, that brings up bill number forty-one sixty-nine. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC to build and purchase a ladder truck for the City of St. Genevieve Fire Department, and the amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand and fifty-three dollars and zero, zero cents.
Move approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to have a motion to do a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Contract with Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC to Build and Purchase a Ladder Truck for the City of St. Genevieve Fire Department in the amount not to exceed $727,053.00.
Move approved.
Second.
I'll need a roll call vote.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4169 now becomes Ordnance 4114.
Very good, very good. It takes us to Bill Number 4182, An Ordnance, first, before we move on, uh, you know, that was a, a long time in coming. I know we've been talking about this board previous to somebody here that this has been going on, and me personally, I think, just like anything else, just like the levy that was put up around this town, it protects this town, and it's served its purpose, and it's helped us, and the same way with this fire truck and this fire department. And I think this is, we have a good fire department, and I think this is going to make us better, uh, and I think it's just the right thing to do, and I'm just pleased with the board and everybody involved here, so, thank you all very much. Bill Number 4182, An Ordnance Approving the Purchase of a Six-Inch Vacuum Assist Self-Priming Diesel Trash Pump from the United Reynolds, in the amount not to exceed $14,771.82 for the sewer department.
Before you vote on it, the freight question, uh, the delivery charge wasn't really a delivery charge, it was inbound freight, normally, they could have just included it in the price, but they broke it out. So that's to get it from wherever it is, Louisiana, she said, to Missouri. Second.
Okay, we'll have to have a roll call vote.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4182 now becomes Ordnance 4115.
There you go. Thank you very much. Takes us to Bill Number 4183, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the General Fund Budget, Number 10 Department, Number 10 Department, and Number 16 Police.
Motion to approve.
Second. Need a roll call vote.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Seven zero, excuse me, seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4183 now becomes Ordnance 4116.
Takes us to Bill Number 4184, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Band Fund Budget, Number 25.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, roll call vote.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yep.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4184 now becomes Ordnance 4117.
Thank you very much. Bill Number 4185, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the K-9 Budget, Number 29.
Motion to approve.
Second. Need a roll call.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4185 now becomes Ordnance 4118.
Thank you very much. Bill Number 4186, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Special Roads Fund, Budget Number 28.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4187 now becomes Ordnance 4120. Oh, 41, excuse me, Bill Number 4186 now becomes Ordnance 4119.
Thank you very much. Takes us to Bill Number 4187, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Valley Springs Tiff Fund, Budget Number 40.
Motion to approve.
Second. I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4187 now becomes Ordnance 4120.
Takes us to, thank you, Bill Number 4188, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Rural Fire Fund, Budget Number 60. I have a roll call.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4188 now becomes Ordnance 4121.
Thank you very much. Takes us to Bill Number 4189, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Federal Levy Fund, Budget Number 45, and the Capital Improvement Fund, Number 7. 70, I'm sorry.
Move approved.
Second. Need a roll call vote.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4189 now becomes Ordnance 4122.
Thank you very much. Bill Number 4190, An Ordnance Approving the Budget for the City of St. Genevieve for Fiscal Year 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Need a roll call vote.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4190 now becomes Ordnance 4123.
Thank you very much. Takes us to new business. Bill Number 4191, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, Amending Section 205.330, A Nuisance Declared of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code as Set forth below.
Make a motion to approve.
Just a quick question, this is just cleaning up one of our current ordinances.
Yeah, this is, we talked about this last meeting, we're making a very minor change to describe it, describe the resident properties, property as opposed to lots.
Okay.
So it encompasses other types of property that are not necessarily residential lots.
All right.
I had it first.
I had a second.
Had a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to Bill Number 4192, An Ordnance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, Amending Section 205, Animals, Article 3, Chickens, Section 205.20, Keeping of Chickens Allowed on All Detached Single Family Lots, A, 3, and D of St. Genevieve Municipal Code as Set forth below.
Direct your questions to Carla.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This was just removing the verbiage of various hardware cloths 12 inches into the ground.
Yeah.
When it comes up, we all chuckle.
We talk about it so often.
There's nothing funny about chickens.
What a good eat. Uh, takes us to Bill Number 4193, An Ordnance Approving a Memorandum of Agreement with Alliance Water Resources Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, to modify the initial professional services agreement dated August 12, 2010.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
What?
I was just going to tell you that our multi-year contract allows them to ask for a 3% increase, uh, and this is 2.5%, below what our contract anticipates. Did they ask for 2%?
Okay, that was 4193. All right, 4194, Uh, An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Capital Improvements Fund, Number 70.
Move approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is this the one you want the second reading on?
Yes, please.
Yes, your treasurer has asked that you do a second reading since this project has already been done, and we've already paid for it.
Second.
For a second.
Need a roll call vote?
No, that was for the second.
Oh, that was for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve.
Oh, you have to read it.
I have to read it again. An Ordnance Approving a Budget Amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Relating to the Capital Improvements Fund, Number 70.
Move to approve.
Second. Need a roll call vote.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Rozika.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent. Bill Number 4194 now becomes Ordnance 4124.
All right, it takes us to Bill Number 4195,